I'll call to order the April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Ventnor City Board of Commissioners meeting. We all raise, rise for the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Roll call, Lisa.
Commissioner Kribel?
Here.
Commissioner Mento?
Here.
Mayor Langria?
Here. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. We have one thing I'm going to make before we get started into our agenda. Uh, we had a Ventnor resident pass away. Uh, Ray Smith Jr. Passed away this week, I believe on the tenth, not sure of the day. Uh, lived in Ventnor for many years, recently moved to Galloway. Worked for Ireland Coffee for forty-three years, very active resident in our community. Sports coaching, uh, was his passion. He coached pirate football, little league, ran the Hutch basketball program. Uh, developed open play for Amherst volleyball back in the seventies here, that league is still going. Uh, he worked for the city mayor's office, uh, for several years. Uh, doing clerical work and from what Patty tells me, always had a smile on his face when greeting our residents, so. Um, sorry for his loss. Yeah, he says, yep, one of our fire captains, so. Large family of kids, like fourteen grandchildren, seven great, great kids. So, nice gentleman, Mr. Kreischer, I know you, know Mr. Smith very well, so. It was a loss to our community. So with that, um, we don't, believe we don't have any presentations. You have a resolution that Leon, I think you're gonna.
Yeah, that's, Lisa has some, but, resolution itself?
Yes.
It's for the introduction of the budget.
Okay, and then you'll talk after that?
Yeah.
Okay. So Lisa, we have resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash one sixteen, resolution of the city of Ventnor, county of Atlantic. Introducing the two thousand and twenty-three municipal budget to be read by title only, right?
Want me to read it?
Sure.
Municipal, municipal budget of the city of Ventnor City, county of Atlantic for the fiscal year of two thousand and twenty-three. Be it resolved that the following statements of revenues and appropriations shall constitute the municipal budget for the year two thousand and twenty-three. Be it further resolved that the said budget be published in the press of Atlantic City in the issue of the April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. The governing body of the city of Ventnor City does hereby approve the following as the budget for the twenty, year two thousand and twenty-three.
So with that, we'll need a motion and a second to pass that resolution.
Motion, motion to pass resolution, two thousand and twenty-three dash one, one, six, as described.
Second.
Yeah, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes. Alright, so Leon, do you want to talk a bit about it, or?
Okay.
We'll have the, we'll have the.
Right, okay, briefly, this is the introduction to the budget, so this is the, since the beginning of the process, even though it's been going on for a long time. Um, your budget will be examined by the state this year. Uh, your, every, two out of every three years, you do it locally, this will be done by the state. So we have to wait for their approval to adopt, which is scheduled right now for May eleventh. We'll have the public hearing, at which time, uh, after this has been advertised and the public's had a chance to look at the budget. Questions will be brought up at that meeting, I'm sure, about the budget itself. The budget is a seven point seven cent tax increase. Uh, it's made up of the same things that are affecting all the municipalities. Uh, increase in health insurance, a lot, increase in other insurances, increase in pensions, increase in salaries. And our fund balance, we're using more than we used last year to try and offset some of that. Uh, but we're still left with a seven point seven cent tax increase. The, you're within both the caps, the levy cap and the spending cap. You could spend a lot more money and you could levy a lot more in taxes, but I'm sure that's not the desire.
No.
So you are legal, uh, like I said, it will be reviewed by TCA and, you know, we'll address any of their comments, uh, long before the public hearing.
And this, this was a hard budget to go through, we got, inflation is one thing, but then the healthcare costs that we talked about, Leon. And we went back to each of our departments and, and asked them to pare back where we could, but that's a pittance to what, you know, the healthcare cost was. That, just the healthcare was half a million dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
Pension was four hundred thousand, yeah.
So it's very difficult.
And if you've been following along, um, there's many other towns that have introduced budgets, all with relatively large tax increases this year. Some which almost never have a tax increase. So it's not uncommon, you're not alone.
Yeah.
Um, I've been an absolute broken record all over the place that, talking about these, there's some that are higher than you, some that are lower than you.
I was at the, uh, conference of mayors the last two days and that's been the topic. So every town is going through this with, with the health increases and, and just inflation of cost of everything, gallon of gas. You know, it's more, materials are more, and all the, all the repairs we do throughout the city, infrastructure, all that costs more dollars. We put projects on hold because of the costs. You know, we wanted to have the band shell at Newport Avenue done, we stopped that because it came in three times what we thought it was going to cost, so. Um, certain things we have to keep doing, and that's why we have to have dollars in, in there to fund it, so.
Right.
But we'll get into a deep discussion, I'm sure, in the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, so tonight is, at least two people need to say yes to move forward. You're not voting to finish it, you're just voting to start it, is what tonight is.
So when we introduce that ordinance, we already did the resolution.
She read the resolution.
We already did that.
They did it.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Leon.
Yeah.
Not one of your, your fun jobs this year.
Oh, yeah, it's been, it's been a lot of fun. So now you need to vote on the introduction.
They did.
We did, right.
Oh, you did vote on it, okay, very good. Then I'll see you in a month, if not sooner.
Okay.
Talk about the budget more. Um, you know how to get me.
If we can find any ways to pull them back, that'd be great, but.
Thanks.
Thanks for your help.
Good night. See you.
All right, we do not have any department head meetings, uh, no capital discussion tonight. Following items are scheduled for action at the next part of our meeting tonight, the regular portion of our commission meeting. We will adopt our minutes from our March sixth special meeting. We have ordinance introduction, two thousand and twenty-three dash zero, zero, four, which is, uh, amending chapter two twenty of the code of the city of Ventnor as it relates to water usage. Uh, those fees are going up as well, um, that'll be going up, our base fee will be going up fifty dollars, um, for the, for the annual rate. Right now it is. Two, two sixty, it'll go up to, now it's two forty, it's going to go up to two ninety. The next resolution or next ordinance introduction is two thousand and twenty-three dash zero, zero, five, which are the sewer rates. That's also going up the same, similar amount, fifty dollars, uh, for the annual rate, up to three ten for that annual fee. The, um, metering rates per gallon are not changing, those are staying the same, we're not increasing those, it's just a flat rate increase. We will have a public hearing and adoption on March two thousand and twenty-three dash zero, zero, three, that is our short-term rental, STR ordinance, chapter one forty-nine. And we had lots of discussion on that over several public hearings, we'll have another one tonight on it, do you have any questions on that? I forgot to ask questions, Tim, did you have any questions on the two other?
No.
Introductions?
No, no, understood.
We got a brief from those guys. And so just to be clear, the, the short-term rental ordinance would go to a two-night minimum. You'd have to register each property, you'd have to register a name, if you're not a local, you'd have to give us a person's name. Um, and their address and contact information in case there's an emergency on the site. The fee was increased to five hundred dollars for the annual licensing. Uh, you'll have to have a placard mounted inside the home with the occupancy load and the name of the contact person, uh, clearly visible from the front door. Um, and that's about it.
If the fee is in line with other municipalities nearby?
Yes, it is.
It is.
It's actually.
Lower than.
Almost a third of what Atlantic City charges, they charge nine hundred dollars a season. For their short-term rentals.
And we're charging five hundred a year.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, and it's a week.
I'm sorry, who was that? Jim, can you make sure people are muted until we go to the public?
Yeah, she got in before I could catch it.
Thank you. We will do resolutions and contracts under resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash one, one, seven to one, three, five, and we're adding a couple tonight, right?
Yes, sir.
So what will those numbers be?
One thirty-six, one thirty-seven, one thirty-eight.
Okay, so we're going to go from one seventeen to one thirty-eight, and those will be adopted by consent. So going through those, the first one is one seventeen, is a Down Beach Seafood Festival, it's their, their, um, contract for the next three years. We're going to maintain our fees, uh, the same they were last year, for a three-year contract with them. Um, I did talk to Donna, oh, she did stay, okay, but you were going home. Okay. Um, I, I was unclear, I thought they were jumbling them all around, she said, as long as they're staying the same, so I was comfortable. I don't know if you were.
Yeah.
Okay. And that locks them in for a three-year, three-year stint for the seafood fest. Resolution one eight, Tim, you, or Tim, you okay with that?
Yes, absolutely, happy to have them.
Okay. Um, resolution one eighteen is the no parking for ski beach surrounding streets during that seafood fest from September sixth to September twelfth. For the Down Beach Seafood Festival. Resolution one nineteen is license agreement for Dean Randazzo Cancer Foundation on June tenth and authorizing waiver of fees during fundraiser. We all good with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um.
For the last year.
One twenty, authorizing the closing of the boat ramp and authorizing no parking at ski beach from June ninth to June eleventh for the paddle for a cause fundraiser. Tied to, uh, Mr. Randazzo's cancer foundation. And just to note, they do work around people trying to get their boats in and out during those times, other than right during the event, so. It's not completely shut down, it's just, we have to limit it.
This is what, the third employee here?
Yep, yep, and it's worked out pretty well, we haven't had any issues. Resolution one twenty-one, it's closing out of escrow, escrow accounts, it's kind of standard. Proving promotion of Sue Van Dine Hunter to recreation program coordinator, that's title change we're doing.
That is, that's, this is in regards to the overall civil service study, we did employee titles and job descriptions and making sure they're in the right title.
Good, right.
Resolution one twenty-three is refund Ventnor City block party fees to Lauren, Lauren Gardner, amount of one hundred, one hundred dollars. One twenty-four is authorizing the execution of a tax abatement agreement with block one for block twelve, lot four point oh three, also known as one oh three South Surrey. It's part of our tax abatement program with new construction, we have several of those on, on the agenda tonight, as is the next one, one twenty-five. Execution of a tax abatement agreement with block fifteen lot two point oh three, known as one oh seven South Oxford. Resolution one twenty-six, authorizing execution of a tax abatement agreement, block one seventy-two lot ten point oh three, known as sixty-six twenty-five Monmouth Avenue. Another tax abatement is one twenty-seven, we're block one seventy-two lot ten point oh five, also known as sixty-six twenty-seven Monmouth Avenue. Another tax abatement is, is resolution one twenty-eight, we're block one eighty-four lot twenty-four, known as one oh four North Wyoming Avenue. Resolution one twenty-nine, a tax abatement agreement for block four, four one, four point oh one, lot nineteen, nine, nine, ten, North Cornwall Avenue. And that's it for the abatements, I think. Uh, resolution one thirty is authorizing closing out of more escrow accounts. One thirty-one, refund for building department permit, amount of four hundred and thirty-five dollars, the sunrun installation services over, of permitting fees. A warding of a landscape improvements to, uh, resolution one thirty-two, excuse me, warding landscape improvements to Bayview Garden Nurseries. Ventnor, Ventnor City Tennis Courts, an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. They're going to redo the plantings around there. I believe Ed presented a slide show to each of you guys.
Yes.
Lisa, we're good with that?
Yep.
Excellent, looking forward to that.
Yep. Resolution one thirty-three, tax refund overpayment. Again, standard practice. Resolution one thirty-four, stating that the city is no longer interested in participating in the two thousand and twenty-one bicycle and pedestrian facilities accommodation bikeway program. This is from, this is in North Beach on Ventnor Avenue. Um, the bike lane that was proposed in that area by the, the bicycle safety committee, bicycle safety study, excuse me. Didn't lead anywhere, it started at one point and just stopped. So we didn't think it was appropriate to do that until we find another way to fund the rest of that bikeway, uh, along Ventnor Avenue. It's also a very narrow section, we have parking on both sides in some of that area, a lot of traffic. So we're going to hold off on that, and it was striping, is all it was. Um, the coming, upcoming project for the fall, the, the C Mac project that will replace all of the traffic signals. And do some bump outs at each of those corners, will not interfere with a future bike lane. Ed shaking his head, yes, so we, we talked about that, so it doesn't restrict us doing this in the future. Um, but just right, not now, is what we're, we're thinking. Any questions on that, Tim?
No, no, I'm glad that you're thinking in terms of doing it in the future, I think it's, uh, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of restrictions on Ventnor Avenue. I, I couldn't quite visualize that being successful as well, not having a, a start and a finish. There's other, there's other places that I think are more bike friendly, um, and we have the bike lanes on Atlantic Avenue, as it is.
Right.
I'm in favor. I hate to turn away money, but I'm in favor.
All right. Resolution one thirty-five is to award engineering and design permitting services for lower Ventnor Heights Resiliency Project, de Blasio Associates, not to exceed three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That is the presentation we had last month from our, one of our consulting engineers about how to. Help push back against the tides in lower Ventnor, um, the area right by the Dorset Avenue Bridge, Edgewater Derby, Surrey Avenue, that area, so. Um, they're going to finish the design on that, and then hopefully we apply for a grant to cover those, those fees, to, to actually do the work from FEMA. Um, and one of the brick rats, correct? Right, that's all, and then we have those three, you have those, Lisa, you want to read those for me?
I do, I'm really, so, um, so resolution one thirty-six, resolution of the city of Ventnor, county of Atlantic, state of New Jersey, authorizing professional services. By marathon engineering and environmental consultants to prepare a CAF for individual permit application for the proposed band shell at Newport Avenue.
Okay, so that is for the band shell, um, due to its location within a hundred and fifty feet of the dune line, land near the dune line, we have to get a CAF permit for that. So I'm sure the original one did not, but the new one will have to. So that's authorizing that permitting process to get started. Next one, Lisa's thirty-seven?
Resolution of the city of Ventnor, county of Atlantic, state of New Jersey, authorizing the rejection of a phone system bid received from public bidding.
And we had, I think, Tom, that was your recommendation to, to pull that for now.
Yes, Mayor, we were, uh, running out of time from the date that bids were received, they were still under review. Uh, there were a, a number of questions that remained kind of unanswered, so we're going to go back to the drawing board, take another look at this. Uh, look at the possibility of purchasing either through state contract or for, from a co-op, um, and we'll be back with this at some point in the future.
Also looking at the county.
Yes.
And also, yeah, the county is also one of the other options we're looking at.
Because we've had some problems with the phones of late. Uh, okay, any questions on that one, Tim?
Uh, no, 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 that one makes perfect sense, as long as we, uh, to, to, to sort of press pause and find out what all our options are.
Yep.
I, I did have one thing I wanted to circle back to on the resiliency project, there were a number of slides that I think the public would be interested in, is there a way that we can share those on our website? Or Facebook page?
Up there now.
It's a pretty massive and, and have, and a massive project, and it impacts that part of the city in a big way. Um, I think.
It is up on the website as of this week, Tim.
Great, awesome, thank you.
It, it is a big document, it was, it's several hundred pages, so.
Yeah.
One thirty-eight, Lisa?
Resolution of the city of Ventnor, county of Atlantic, state of New Jersey, authorizing seasonal employment to Duke Malfera as a labor for the city of Ventnor in the public works department.
It's a seasonal employee, we've had several people go out on, on, uh, medical issues, so bringing in some of our summer people a little bit early, fill in those gaps. Okay, we're good with all those? Next up, we'll have our approval bills and payroll. We'll have discussion items, I don't think we have any on the agenda.
I'm not aware of any.
Okay. Okay, so this public portion will be for items that are on the agenda tonight that we went through briefly. Um, I will say this, you can talk about short-term rentals, but we're going to have that open, that ordinance public session as part of that ordinance. So if you could tie those comments when that comes up in our regular session, that would be helpful. But if you have any comments or questions on any of our other items that we talked about in our workshop, please step forward, state your name, and we'll listen to your comments. Eric Kreischer. One second, sir, we're going to listen to this gentleman, you're going to have to come up, state your name.
Tim Kreischer, Ventnor City. Uh, I don't know if this is the proper time there, since it's not on the agenda, but since you mentioned it about Ray Smith.
Yeah.
So I'd just like to, like to thank you and the city for acknowledging Ray and, and recognizing, uh, his years of service. You know, there's probably not many people that live in Ventnor today that know the name of Ray Smith. Uh, but I think it's important that we keep people like that who made such a great contribution to the city of Ventnor throughout the years. That we always keep their memory alive, and just by mentioning it tonight, you've done that, so I want to thank you. You know, it's been said that Ray has probably touched more. Kids' lives in the city of Ventnor than anybody else in their, in our history, and that's not exactly true, he's probably touched more lives. Than anybody in the history of Ventnor with his coaching, uh, and his leadership in their recreation programs, he had a tremendous influence. On the adults that he, that coached with him and participated in the recreation program. Uh, and I know of at least three, there's probably many more, at least three, one of them mine. That marriages came out of adult programs that he started in the city of Ventnor. So it was not just the youth that he impacted, but the adults as well, so I want to thank you for recognizing him tonight.
Absolutely, I, I didn't get to know the gentleman very well, I met him once, I think, uh, but I know you're going to miss him at your, your coffees on, on Saturday morning.
Saturday morning, we had breakfast with him four days before he passed away.
Yeah, that's a shame to lose him.
Sorry for your loss.
Yeah, so thank you, Commissioner, and on a lighter note, regarding resili, resili, resiliency program, one, or, or resolution one thirty-five. Will my taxes go down because I'll no longer be a waterfront property as often? Thank you.
Well, we hope, we hope your flood insurance goes down, how about that?
You, you're welcome to try to pitch that.
Anyone else, sir, you want to say something, please come up.
Hi, uh, my name's Albert Einosi, um, I'm here tonight to request the elimination of the parking permit. Ordinance, it's imposed on the North Beach.
I'm going to hold you right there, that was not part, you'll be able to say that and have that comment when we go to general comments. What we're, what we asked at this session of the public is to talk about what's on our agenda, that's not.
Later in the meeting, or in another meeting.
I'll give you about fifteen minutes and we should.
I, I don't need that, that much.
No, I mean, wait about fifteen minutes.
Oh, wait.
That's all. So anyone else with anything on the agenda tonight? Jim, can you check in, in the Zoom?
Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak or comment on any of the items that were discussed or being voted on tonight? Please.
Yes, I, I just wanted to ask, you said that there's an increase in the sewer and the water, fifty each, a hundred dollars a quarter, so that's.
A, a year.
A, oh, oh, fifty dollars a year, oh, okay, great, what, what is, is that because, has something gone up with that as well?
So every, all of our costs are, have increased from supplies to labor costs, to gasoline to run the trucks, to repair everything in the city. Electric is up, also the fact that we are starting to prepare for state mandated lead program that we're going to have to start to, to put money into, in the very near future.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thanks for commenting. Anyone else on Zoom, Jim?
Anybody else on Zoom who wishes to make comment? I don't see anyone else.
Okay, anyone else here? Asked for a motion to close the public portion?
Motion to close public portion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, now we'll look to close the workshop portion of the meeting and move into our regular portion, in a motion to close and to open our, our regular meeting.
Motion to close workshop portion and call to order regular portion of the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the first item is the approval of minutes for March sixth, two thousand and twenty-three special meeting. Need a motion, please?
Motion approved meetings, uh, for March sixth, special meeting.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes. Okay, we'll need a motion to introduce ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash zero, zero, four, an ordinance of the city of Ventnor, county of Atlantic. State of New Jersey amending chapter two twenty of the code of the city of Ventnor as it relates to water usage.
Motion to introduce ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash zero, zero, four as described.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes. Uh, need a motion to introduce ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash zero, zero, five. An ordinance to city of Ventnor, county of Atlantic, state of New Jersey, amending chapter one eighty-six of the code of the city of Ventnor as the same relates to sewers.
Motion to introduce ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash zero, zero, five as described.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes. Need a motion to open a public hearing on ordinance two thousand and twenty-three, which is an amending chapter one forty-nine, the code of the city of Ventnor. Requiring certain rental units to be, to obtain mercantile licenses and supplementing ordinance regulations of short-term rentals. So need a motion to open that public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing, ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero, zero, three as described.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, with that, we are open for comments on ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash zero, zero, three, please step to the mic, state your name and provide your comments. Goodbye.
Hi, Beth Court, one twenty-five North Derby Avenue, Ventnor. Um, I host or co-host six vacation rentals in Ventnor that are all listed on Airbnb, their two bedrooms are smaller. I've hosted a hundred and ninety-seven one-night rentals in the past twelve months, which brought four hundred and thirty-two people to Ventnor. I did not receive a single complaint from a neighbor or the city for any of the one hundred and ninety-seven one-night stays I hosted in the past year. And the large majority of those were between October and May when local businesses are at their slowest. At previous commission meetings, many residents spoke about safety concerns with having strangers next door. The ordinance you put forward doesn't do anything to improve safety. To educate people who are not familiar with Airbnb, all you need to rent through the platform is your name and email address and phone number and payment information. Hosts can additionally request that guests verify their identity with a government ID, but it's not a requirement, and some hosts don't ask for it. I do. I'm explaining this because in theory, with the new ordinance, an unidentified eighteen-year-old can book a house in Ventnor not only for one night, but instead for a weekend-long banger. Banning one-night rentals does not solve party houses or safety concerns. Crafting an ordinance with additional security measures can reduce parties and increase safety. This could include requiring rental renters are verified with a government ID and raising the minimum age to rent. Atlantic City, for example, requires renters are verified with ID and has a minimum age of twenty-one. Identity verification is especially important on Airbnb because the platform operates with personal reviews that are nearly impossible to get removed. Renters cannot create fake or throwaway accounts when their government ID is connected to their profile. Renters are significantly less likely to cause trouble when their government ID is connected to their profile, because if they get a bad review. Future hosts could refuse to rent to them. Commissioners, please table ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash zero, zero, three tonight and instead draft an ordinance with safety measures such as identification. For identity verification and a minimum rental age. Please reconsider banning one-night rentals so you do not negatively impact people like me who are hosting responsibly. And in turn negatively impact our local businesses by reducing the number of tourists visiting our town. Had I not been able to rent for single nights in the past year, four hundred and thirty-two less people would have come to visit Vent, Ventnor. If you're set on banning one-night rentals, please reconsider limiting it to larger properties that are more likely to bring in parties. Instead of creating a blanket ordinance that will prevent smaller homes from welcoming couples and individual families to town. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you, Council, Ben Yelo, it's one north Nashville. As you know, Lance, we have spoken, you know, in, at length in this, in this, uh, arena here. I feel that bringing in, you're basically turning our entire city into a motel by allowing these two-night, one-night rentals. I believe that, you know, we should go more like what Margate has, which would be a seven-night minimum rental for a house, just like Ocean City. I know, I, I respect the, the need to bring additional revenue. I know I I respect the the need to bring additional revenue in for the businesses in the winter, but I don't know how you're gonna how you're going to police a two-night stay or a one-night stay. And the other issue we have here is parking. With all these extra rentals coming in, parking is a big problem. My street, I cannot park on it now, and I can't imagine what it's like when the two Airbnbs across from me start renting full term for the summer. I respect that. I respectfully request that we do table this motion or this this ordinance for further discussion with the public, because I don't think everybody who lives here understands the impact that this is gonna have on their city.
Just for for the public's note, we had two hearings completely separate from an ordinance. We had them over the last six months.
Okay.
So we had pretty full houses each night.
Hmm.
So we've had two meetings before this.
Right.
But I thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, my name is Janice. I I actually agree with both of the people who just spoke. Beth's comments about the the IDs, I think that that's a really valuable thing. Though I I I do think that two nights is too short. I believe that Ventnor and Atlantic City both have a week and 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 a higher amount of money that people have to pay to do it. I mean, personally, I live in a residential area. But I have a hotel in front of me and a hotel behind me. And there have been issues. Last year, I would say was better. There's always parking issues, especially when it's only a two-night, a one or two-night, because then everybody has all their people at one time coming. When it's spread out, then people have their visitors, you know, a little bit at a time. I live on a tiny street where the houses are little when people had one car. Now the people who live here minimally have a truck and a car. And there's no parking even in the winter, let alone in the summer. And it's, you know, frankly, to have strangers coming and going all the time. I'm not too thrilled about it. I'm a single woman. If I had young children, if I had young girls, I wouldn't be too thrilled about that either. I mean, what do we want Ventnor to be? Are we a hometown? Or do we want to be, quote, that destination? You know, frankly, I think that we're starting to lose the charm of what we have been and what makes Ventnor so special. What made us that that little gem? Just food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Sorry.
Hi, my name is Ellen Lerman, one oh seven North Martindale. I have to say, this gentleman and that woman actually said everything I was going to say. I just think it's it's gonna put a burden on our police department, too, of people calling and having them come because these kids are having party, whatever. And I understand this is a vacation place and you want to have a good time and whatever, but I have seen it and it's not pretty. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ellen.
Hello, Christina Vitale, three one three North Suffolk Avenue. I've actually have an Airbnb right across the street from me. In this past summer, we've had naked women running across. Police, we had to call the police. It was a major drama going on, and it was a little chaotic from one day to another. One person leaves, another person comes, one person has five cars, and we have, we're on a little street with hardly any parking at all. So it's amazing that we're still talking about even a one night. I I can't even imagine that it's not five nights, at least five nights. Just to get rid of that riffraff that comes for like, I don't know, a show down the street, you know, or something like that, or casino. Because that's what you get. You get like a whole bunch of kids, rowdy kids, into one house, and they cause chaos in a in a residential town. It's it's horrible for me. It's scary to me. I am by myself in my house. And it's a scary thought that all of a sudden I have to worry about somebody coming in that I don't even know for one day, two days. I I really think it should be five days to have a family. Don't you want families coming here? Instead of just a whole bunch of crazies when they can actually rent in a hotel somewhere and be supervised? Nobody's supervising these people. We don't know where they're coming and going from. You know, I have cameras, but a lot of good they're gonna do to protect me, the camera. That's my piece.
Okay, thank you, Christina. Anyone else? Then, ma'am, I'll ask you to wait till the end of because this is just, this is a public hearing just on short-term rentals. Sir?
Mike Woszczanek, I live at three ten Suffolk, right across the street from this young lady here. Uh, my home was violated last summer. I'm the home where the naked woman walked in because she was lost. Okay, it was Jamaican weekend in Atlantic City. It was rowdy. We had a house full next door, and she lost her way. They must have been having a real good time. She went into the wrong house. She walked right into my living room. Police responded. Everything worked out just fine. Two-day rentals, one-day rentals are worse because these people come in, they party, they can make a mess and they're gone. They have nobody to answer to. Longer rental, maybe, because now you're gonna get responsible people. But one- to-day rentals, all you're gonna get is the guys in and out of town, they have their fun, and how do you catch up? They don't care about their security deposit. They'll gladly pay for the damage, because all they want to do is raise hell. But I was personally subjected to it last summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the short-term rental ordinance? Jim, you want to check online one more time?
Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak or comment on the short-term rental ordinance? Please make yourself known by raising your hand or within the chat feature, and we'll recognize you. Nope, we're good.
None. Motion to close the public portion?
Motion to close public portion, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, just for discussion purposes. So I like the idea of IDs. We don't have that requirement, Lisa, in our currently?
I don't. I don't think so, no.
Would that be a significant enough change that we'd have to to reintroduce?
I would think.
Generally speaking, I didn't analyze the whole ordinance, but if you're gonna make a change to it, it's anything somewhat substantial.
Right.
Then then you'd probably have to reintroduce.
That was already required, so I that's my fault for not knowing.
And that that sounds like
Yeah.
gut reaction is that's a relatively significant change.
Yeah. And a minimum age. I think you do a minimum age. Lisa's just checking now.
I I agree. I think both of those security issues are 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 a benefit. I think the 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 police department came to after reviewing this, that the the most of the problems came from one night. Um, so I'm in favor of a two-night. I would also want to look at this again after a two-night season and look at a five-night for the um, Memorial Day to Labor Day. I would suggest that maybe next season.
So you want to table this and come back to those?
We you had two meetings. We heard a lot of good comments at those meetings, and I think we had some meetings last year, too. But we heard some comments tonight. I don't think we heard at those meetings.
I agree.
I would be in favor of tabling this to consider some of the things.
Okay, I'm good with that. All right, so I'll need a motion to table this, right?
Motion to table ordinance two zero two three dash zero zero three.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes. All right, so that's table. We'll go back. We'll take your comments. I appreciate them. Um, we were looking at and we had discussed as the the two-night minimum as a start. And then we talked about doing different wintertime versus summertime. Wintertime, we'd allow shorter terms, and then summertime with, you know, the five to seven day. That's something else we'll go back and look at again and.
And even the size of the properties. It's interesting.
Yeah, Beth, that was another good idea. Where are you?
Yeah.
Because, look, we have to write regulations and laws to handle the people that don't act properly. And 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 I I'm sorry that you're being penalized for that, because you do run good properties, all of them. I've seen how they operate in both here and in other towns. But if we all follow the rules, and I'm gonna steal your quote, we wouldn't be lost. So that's, we have to control them somehow. So we're willing to work with our residents both on both sides of this. We do have to understand that this is, you know, commercial-type businesses operating in a residential area. So we have to kind of weigh our residents that don't want any of them versus how we can make them better. So every municipality is struggling with this right now. Briganteen's looking at it. I think their meeting was last week that they had public comments on it. So I'm, I've been talking to Vince, Sarah, their mayor, for a while about it. There's certainly some new ideas. So we're gonna table that, and we'll come back to that in a couple of months, hopefully. All right. So we're not gonna adopt. We tabled. So we need a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three, one seventeen to one thirty-eight, correct? By consent. Your motion, Tim?
Motion to adopt resolutions as described.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes, we have payables at the one.
That's nice.
Yes. Mayor Langria?
Yes. Okay, our next item is approval of bills and payroll. Amy?
Payrolls for this period, five hundred ninety-eight thousand, two dollars, seventy-one cents. The payables for this period, seven million, or I'm sorry, four million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, three sixty-five oh three.
See, I mean.
Yeah. Need a motion to approve our bills and payroll from our CFO?
Motion to approve the corrected amount from the bills and payroll for our CFO, yes.
Okay, and I will second, but I am recusing myself from twenty-three dash zero zero seven forty-eight, seven ten, and three thirty-seven dash oh three. And the reason for that is those are payments to the Atlantic County Utilities Authority. I sit on the board as a commissioner there, and so I'm recusing myself for any payments to the AC.
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes. Uh, next item is our announcements and safety report. That's printed on our agenda. Commissioner comments? Uh, Tim, I'll let you go first since you're.
Uh, I've been a little bit out of the loop this week, so I don't have too much to offer, only to say that it looks like we're getting a grant for the recreation department. I guess that kind of falls between you and I, Lance.
Yep, I have that on on my comments. Yep.
So I'll pass that off to you.
There you go. Ray?
Well, we pretty much talked about it on revenue and finance, and the hot topic is the budget, and we've been working hard on it. And we've been meeting with various department heads over and over and over again, looking for ways to cut, but the fact of the matter is, you have your labor contracts, you have your benefits, you have your pension, you have utility and fuel costs. There's not too much there to whittle down. There's not too much that that we can look at. There's there's costs there that are contractual, for example. And even our, you know, fire and police contracts. We went to mediation on both of those. Neither side walked away from the table, jumping for joy.
Right.
But we 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 both walked away knowingly, did what was reasonable and the best that we can do. Nobody was ecstatic, but it was what it was. So that's what we're living with and and with the twenty-three percent increase from the state on benefits, it makes it really tough.
Right.
Everything else, you know, all the all the like stuff in the budget remain pretty much the same um, that you know, that we had control of.
Right.
So.
Yeah, we have, we we have, I think we have great people in our positions in the city. And in order to keep them, you have to pay them, first of all, with their union contracts, we do, but, you know, those are dollars you have to spend to run a municipality.
Right.
Yeah, and I think I think this is a hard one for us because we've always tried to keep things uh, under control and to be faced with unbudgeted and mandated increases in health healthcare and pension, it's just too much to to absorb, even though we're using more fund balance. It's a difficult, it's a difficult year for us all.
Yep, and we are looking at other options for healthcare.
And and we did, as Maria said, I just want to mention, we did, as Maria said, ask the uh, all our department heads to look at ways to conserve, and even with those measures, they're asking for the needs and not the wants. It was it was it was hard hard to move the needle that has been pushed so far by those two major increases, the healthcare and the pension.
And we had our consultant look at alternative healthcare, and we didn't have any bites on it, not this year. So, you know, we had some exposure in the past year or so, and we'll take another look at it next year and see if we can get some interest. But we have an obligation in our contracts to offer equal or better.
Right.
So that's a challenge also.
Hey, uh, the grant that Commissioner Kribel talked about was a fifty-thousand-dollar grant for recreational, um, upgrade parks. Timely, we need some money for Seashore Park, do some maintenance there, um, or recreational buildings. So that that's welcome, welcome dollars, um, to be able to do some maintenance on those parks. Um, Ocean Avenue, which is this short little stretch of street right behind us here, construction will start there on Monday. Um, that'll be a road widening kind of project. We'll be moving the sidewalk back on this side, city hall side, about four feet to widen that roadway, provide better vehicular access as well as a charging station for the city's new electric vehicle. So.
Also grant funded.
Grant funded, yes. Um, Oxford, Dudley and Marshall should be finished by the end of the month. We're hoping it. Okay, uh, there are streets out in in the Heights, and the kiosk on the boardwalk for the new pier gate will mid-May. We're hoping that should be finished, though. So if you haven't had a chance, take a look at it, take a walk out on the pier. You can see it. Um, it's pretty neat today. They lifted the whole thing onto the pier. They did not stick, build it on site. Actually, lifted it up with a forklift onto the onto the pier after we unstuck the forklift on the beach. So good work, PW. Yeah, so thanks, Maria. It's also on my list. The, um, we will have the grand opening of the Ventnor City Beach Patrol Headquarters on the twenty-seventh, which is Memorial Day weekend. Not sure in the exact time yet, probably in the morning, right before roll call. Uh, we'll also tie that into our ceremonial opening of the beaches that day as well. So going out on that Saturday of Memorial Day weekend, and you'll get to see, uh, Ventnor City Beach Patrol Headquarters. Um, it's a great building, came out really well. I believe, um, Chief Bergman and those guys will be, he'll be thrilled to be in there after the building they put up with for years. Served its time well, but it was time to go. And I think that's all I have. Nothing else. All right, with that, we will look for a motion, open up to the public for any comments, sir. Um, motion, please?
Motion to open the public comments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First one up.
Yes, hi again. Uh, my name is Albert Iñozzi. I'm here to request the elimination of the parking permit ordinance. It's on, it is unfair for just North Beach to pay for parking. Um, I understand, from what I understand, I could be wrong, it's that, um, years ago, when the casinos opened, supposedly they were supposed to be stopping the casino workers from parking in the area and taking a jitney to work. Well, that that plan has ran its course. At this time, it's a free-for-all or first-come, first-served, as we're always talking about parking. You know, we have, uh, people who park there and they go to the beach. We have people who park there who go to the Nookies or the or in the movie theater. They even changed the signs. It used to be two hours free parking. Now it's four hours because they can't have dinner and, uh, you know, go to a movie where I can wait for my parking space. And actually, they, it 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 anywhere in in the country or anywhere in the world for that matter, if you if you pay for parking, you get a parking space. I still don't know where my parking space is or anybody else on the block. So again, I'm requesting, which which makes sense, is to eliminate the parking permit. I I'll go on the first-come, first basis, and and that's what I'm doing anyway. Except I'm paying for the park.
For your comment, the last comment, what'd you say? You go on the what?
I will go, I will take the first-come, first basis, which I'm on anyway. I don't have a space for a parking permit. And again, it's unfair. It's only North Beach paying for that. There are no casino workers who take a space and go somewhere. You know, I I don't understand that. You know, I I don't understand that. Maybe you can help me out. I don't know why it's being done. Revenue, I guess.
Well, I can answer that question. Um, it's not, it's not the revenue. Um, there's a lot of, you know, there might be some misinformation that that is a revenue item, but it it really isn't. Um, so years ago, it was that the, that that area was flooded with casino workers that were taking the jitneys. And that Atlantic City also has a permit program on the borderline of the Jackson Avenue, north that, that end of the city. Um, and over the years, that permitting, um, needed to be reformed. It was only a a few dollars and there were six thousand permits being given out to six hundred parking places. So that really didn't operate in a way that was conducive to allowing the residents. And that, and you're a hundred percent right. Purchasing a permit does not entitle you to a city-owned parking spot, but it does entitle you to, um, uh, beyond four hour parking because you're a resident. So, so it's not a, um, it, and that, that area happens to be one of the more densely populated areas because of the high rises. Um, and the high rises, um, have a number of bedrooms. There's more units in that part of the city than other parts of the city. So we're, we're open to reform it. We talk about it a lot. We've had some open discussions about it. But, um, uh, but the, the, I think the note, I think you might find quite a backlash in the area if there was no parking permits in the North Beach.
And but again, what, again, you're saying it should be for reformed. Well, I I believe it goes from Jackson to Victoria. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's a lot of streets. And, you know, and again, I'm not, not being smart about it. It's a lot of revenue. I get it. But, you know, it's time now. I, just put me in the mix, first come, first served. And I don't think anybody in that area is gonna talk about wanting to pay the money to park. It it doesn't make any sense. It's time, you know, it, it, the whole, the whole city should be paying then. Why am I paying? And nobody else is. I go down further, they don't pay. It's, it's unfair. Totally unfair. And if if you don't understand that, I'm not sure why. But anyway, my own record here?
You are. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I have to say, thank you.
Thanks for coming out tonight. Was it a nosey, was it?
I know.
I know.
But you just called.
No. No, I did not. Anyone else? Come on up, Ellen.
Ellen Lerman again. Um, I just have to say like the boardwalk with the motorbikes. And then the dogs, and I love dogs, don't get me wrong. I think, you know, but people walk two, three dogs. There's poop on the, uh, all the years I've lived here. I've never had poop or pee all over the boardwalk. Motorbikes today, four or five motorbikes just whizzing by me. It's not even summer. Uh, also, um, on Martindale at the end of the beach, no, we've called many times to have the back of the beach cleaned. Nothing. There's beer bottles, there's all kinds of debris. Nobody cleans it. We've called. Uh, also
Who are you calling?
Uh, we called the city. I forget. Everybody on the block calls.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a suggestion. We have an app called See Click Fix. An application on your phone?
See what?
See Click Fix, S E E C L I C K F I X. Download that app. Take a picture of your issue. It goes to the county first. They disseminate it to whichever department it goes to. If it's Public Works or Code, I get a copy of it.
That's who I called Public Works.
Okay, so if you do that, it gets documented. I see it and ask Ed. I send him to him. I send him to Jimmy Agnesino. When I see him, I want, and we can track those as well.
Is it possible to get somebody to write it down for me because I will not remember.
Leo, can you write that down, please? Thank you.
See Click Fix?
See Click Fix. The county hosts it for us. The ACU A hosts it for us.
But shouldn't you clean the back of the, the beach anyway?
So we do when, when we can get there. It's not done every day.
It's not done at all.
That's not true. So
Well, on Martindale, they, they seem to stop at Washington. Because I had a problem.
We have your comment. We'll
No, I, I, can I say something else?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, going down on the beach, you know, when you're on the walkway. Uh, I had asked one of the, I saw him fixing the, it's broken, the wood. So I saw a gentleman and I said, oh, you're fixing it on, it's broken on Martindale. He said, call City Hall. And then he went down Washington Avenue, didn't even, this, this is last year. Didn't even check. You know, you think he would get out and look? No. So I hate to be a
We'll take a look at it.
But what about the dogs? What about all the dogs on the boardwalk and why?
We can't have a police officer up on the boardwalk twenty-four seven.
Those, I called them wannabes, the young boys or young girls that used to walk.
Summertime, we have what we call special police officers that are up there more often. Um, we bring them in when our population swells. This year, we're hoping for ten to have more than we've had in the past.
Okay.
Um, if you see dogs in the boardwalk, call the non-emergency number and they'll send a police officer up there and look for them.
Because I've had them jump on me. So, you know, it's
Call, we don't know that unless you call the police department.
You feel bad to pull
Uh, but if you don't complain and
You know, for they have a lot to do.
That's who enforces that, is the police department.
All right. Thank you very much.
You got it. Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi.
Hi.
Pat Harrigan, six oh eight North Cambridge Avenue.
I recognize.
In, in Ventnor Heights. And I'm here as
That's right.
President of the Ventnor, uh, Pickleball Association. And I'm just here to let Ed and the commissioners know that we are volunteer members for pickleball. And I know that there's a huge void right now for the Department of Recreation and we would be a resource, a help. However, we can be utilized, we would be open to be utilized in that manner.
Ed, you were looking for a key point person. We, we might have found it for pickleball. So
That's it.
Thanks, Pat.
Appreciate that, Pat.
Anyone else? No? Jim, you want to check one more time?
Yeah, a couple of people, I have a couple of people on Zoom, the one, uh,
One second, Jim, we got Beth in in the room.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you for reconsidering the ordinance. I really appreciate it. And um, I do think the government ID is a big help for safety. Uh, I'd recommend looking at Atlantic City's ordinance because there's this, is very detailed and um, if it's working really well there, it's working for the hosts, it's working for the community. So it's, uh, that's a good one to consider.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, Jim, anybody on Zoom?
Yes, uh, first one is, um, the name's Shaloha.
Thank you. Um, I, I just, it's about the dogs. You know, last year I never walked once on the boardwalk and I never walked on the beach because people are not following rules. I mean, there's laws. These dogs are on the beach unleashed. They come running up to you, big dogs bounding up to you. I just freeze in place. I stop and I stop going. And the people are like, oh, he's friendly, but they don't call the dog back. And the dog is loose. So that has ruined walking on the beach. Walking on the boardwalk, aside from poop and whatever, you've got these people. They're standing by the railing, talking to their friends, their back is to the dog, the leash is eight, six to eight feet stretched out. So it's into the other lane half the time. And people are trying to ride around. The dog is barking, the dog is tripping people because the leash is across. It's, it's an untenable situation and it's not, it's not fair because it is illegal to do it and nobody is stopping them. And, you know, years ago, sometimes if I was on the boardwalk and I would see somebody walking their dog, I would very nicely say to them, oh, I guess you're not from here. Uh, did you know that it's, that we're not allowed to have dogs on the boardwalk? And they'd go, yeah, I know. You know, they think it's not about them and it doesn't apply to them. And I think that maybe they need a good dose of knowing that, yeah, it does apply to them. And whatever you need to do to ticket them, whatever, to make it stop. And if the ticket's high enough, people will get the message and they'll stop doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Angela?
Hi, uh, I just wanted to say about the parking, um, on Nor- in North Beach area, it's not really enforced on my street. It hasn't been enforced in about maybe like four or five years. The short term rentals on our street, they don't have parking permits. It's a mess. Other kids come to our street and it's just a big issue. And I wouldn't mind paying for the permit and all that if it was actually enforced and yeah, in the area. And I also wanted to say something about trash. Um, I've called Ventnor, like Public Works, probably about four or five times. Uh, people down the street from me left a TV there and it's been there since August. And it's been on the curb. Nothing, nothing's been done about it and AccuA won't pick it up. No one will pick it up. So yeah, and I called again today. So I just wanted to mention that.
Angela, provide, provide us the, the block, the street and the block you're on?
Well, Amherst. Yeah, I Yeah, I I called about maybe four or five times since
What, what hundred block on Amherst? Is it the beach? Is it?
The beach block, yeah. It's, you'll see, it's the first house from the boardwalk. The TV's been there since August.
Okay.
So.
Just go down and see if it's there.
Yeah, okay, let's
Thank you.
Is there anybody else on Zoom who wishes to speak? I think we're good.
Okay. Look for a motion to close public portion?
Motion to close public portion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, executive session, we do not have. Correct, Leo?
No.
Somebody you want to bring to us from the planning board? You're good?
No.
Thanks for stepping in tonight. Tom, anything? All right, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, for coming out.